Evening everybody. Welcome to the GP meeting. Item number one, to confirm members can communicate with others at the meeting and to receive any apologies. So over to you Pete.
Thank you Chair. I haven't got either of the councillor Bisco's or councillor Bishop or councillor Broad. Councillor Brown?
Yep, here and can hear.
Mrs Davidson?
I can see and hear.
Mrs Allenbrook?
I can see and hear.
Councillor Garrick?
I can hear and see some of you.
Councillor Reeve?
I can also hear and see some of you.
Did we have any apologies at your end Julia?
No.
Okay, that's it. Thanks Chair.
Right, item two, members to declare any disclosable pecuniary interest or non-registerable interest, including details thereof, in respect of any item on this agenda. I would like to declare an interest in item 10. I'm not sure if it precludes me from voting, not, no, no problem. But I have declared an interest on that. Item three, to suspend standing orders, any public or guests?
Ignore it and go straight on to six.
Right. Item six, to confirm the minutes of the meeting of six one, the general purposes committee held on the 5th of October 2020, minutes attached. And can we take them together? The extraordinary meeting of the general purposes committee, held on the 23rd of November 2020. Can somebody move it?
Can't take them together Judy.
Can't take them together. Right, item on six one then. Councillor Reeves is proposing, I will second.
Okay.
Right, all those, anybody against or abstaining?
Shouldn't need to abstain.
No, right, okay then. So that's carried. Item six two, the extraordinary meeting of the general, oh, good evening councillor Thomas.
Good evening.
Right, we're on to item six two on the agenda, the extraordinary meeting of the general purposes committee, held on the 23rd of November. Would somebody like to propose? Councillor Reeves, somebody to second? Councillor Broad, Brown, right. That's, and any abstentions or against?
Shouldn't be.
Shouldn't be. Right. Moving on to item seven, the town clerks report, which you've all got in front of you.
Yeah, I've only got the, only got the one item on the report tonight Chair, which refers to the festivals meeting and the meeting of interested and relevant organisations, which I know you couldn't attend because of family commitments.
That's correct.
Perhaps councillor Reeves could update numbers?
Oh.
Yeah, we, we had a meeting.
Hello Alison, Henry, good evening.
Now, because I can't log on to mine at all. Could you send me the link again please? Mine's decided to go pear shaped, because I tried to get my other computer working. It's gone.
Okay, we're getting a bit of feedback now, so can everybody?
I'm standing next to Henry, that's why.
No comment.
Oh, there I am. I am there.
Right.
You need to mute Henry.
Oh, okay.
Right, yes, I didn't, I couldn't attend that because of a family emergency. So if I can ask councillor Reeves to just give us a quick update because she was there.
Yep, so Laura basically led the meeting. There were a few people that couldn't attend. We produced a plan for moving forwards, but we also said that we needed to invite the people that weren't able to attend the first meeting, to attend another meeting. So for example, the schools weren't able to be there because it was held during the half term holiday. And also, it was at 10 o'clock in the morning, so it precluded people that were at work. So we decided we would hold another meeting to obviously get the message out there to the other organisations. I think councillor Thomas had requested that he be invited, and councillor Brown and various other people that wanted to be in on what we were talking about. I'm sure Laura would be really happy to share the infographic that she'd made up, that has divided the year basically into four seasons. So instead of having four distinct festival committees, we would have four distinct seasons of the year. And we were going to work up what was going to fit into those seasons. And we asked people for suggestions. And it was, there was lots of ideas about what we could put in various parts. And then we decided that it would be a good idea to have like a broad ideas meeting once a quarter that anyone could dip into, and then have smaller groups that dealt with the quarters of the year. So I think the plan is, Laura can correct me if I get this wrong, that we have another meeting before the end of January, and that a full report goes to this committee at the beginning of February. Is that right Laura?
Yes, that is. Do you want me to show the graphic or not?
Yeah, you've got it there. That'd be great. Thank you.
Literally just found it. Bear with me. I'm attempting to share my screen. Sorry everybody. So share screen. Can you see that? It's a bright yellow screen?
Yeah.
Yes, yep, yep.
Obviously, it's not set in stone. It's not correct by any stretch of the imagination. It is just, so it shows you the spring group would include things like St Piran's and Easter, summer would be Murdoch, autumn would include pasty tour of Britain and so forth. But it just, it breaks down the festivals more, so we can do more. And that was always the idea of having conversations, moving forward, the organisational review about engagement, and getting our names out there and doing more basically. So by this, it kind of doesn't stick with just the festivals. It is bigger, it's a bigger.
Yes.
So yeah.
Excellent.
I will attempt to unshare screen now, she says. There we go. Thank you.
Oh, I think that's just about everything Judy.
Also, it occurs to me that this is, it's actually very relevant. When I was studying the item later on, which talks about the, how we're going to handle, or Cornwall councillors is going to handle future engagement through libraries, through their one stop shop that used to be called that, it isn't now. So this kind of ties into this, doesn't it? This, how are we going to handle post Covid? How are we going to treat our community? Is it, how are we going to engage them? Are they all going to be kept at arm's length and handed a computer or a phone? But all of this encompasses, I feel, what we're trying to do. So it's actually very relevant. We've probably got the timing about right. So if we can look to have had that meeting with any additional people we can think of, and then the report comes in February, I think that would be a very good outcome. I don't know what the rest of you think. Right, if, are there any questions for Laura? Anything we need to add to this at all before we move on? No? Okay then. We'll, thank you for that Laura. I think it's really exciting. Looking, and thank you for what, all you've done in this very difficult time. Hopefully, it's going to get easier. Item eight, to receive correspondence. Has there been any Pete since?
You've got two items on the correspondence schedule. They're really both for noting, but the first one is a poster and a community handbook on the national census next year. As you know, the census day at the moment is scheduled for the 21st of March. The amount of, by the amount of information that's coming out, I don't think they're looking at cancelling it. And as you will see, the community handbook that you've got there is a good 16 pages. So I've just put, just put that there for your information at the moment. And similarly, some news from Cornwall council, that as part of their air quality management areas, they're going to be installing a rapid electrical, electric vehicle charger up in Flowerpot Chapel car park.
That's very good news, I think. Anything on the correspondence that anyone wants to bring up? Questions, comments? Councillor Reeve?
Yeah, Judy, I just wanted to make you aware that I know the clerk has had an item of correspondence from the Chamber of Commerce. I think it came out too late to be added to this agenda. If we're, if we're not going to actually be shared the correspondence, I'll bring it up under the Covid information officers report, which is a bit later on.
So should we proceed that way Pete? I take it that back. Hello? Can you unmute Peter? Right, thank you. Right, moving on then. This to the, sorry, I've lost my place now. Is Laura, hang on, is Laura next? I'm going to go back. These 60 pages don't help, do they?
Community project manager.
That's what I thought. I got a report up and that got stuck with 60 pages. Laura, would you like to give us your report? Sorry about that.
That's okay. And hopefully you've all seen sight of the report of, for myself and the events team. And it's been a busy, busy couple of months working behind the scenes to get everything sort of put onto social media and get messages out there and get Merry Christmases out there and quite, try and keep the Redruth Town Facebook page joyful, the town council page more sort of strategic. But one of the things that did come to, leading back to the big ideas meeting we were talking about, one of the things that did come out of it was that we wanted to set the next two years worth of festival dates, hence the reason why I've put 2021 and 2022 in the report. And they kind of tie in with what we've always done. I have checked Royal Cornwall show's schedule, so it ties in with the week after that. Obviously, that can change, as me and Peter know, as they've changed it at the last minute, which was really helpful one year. But anyway, but it just, if we can agree that as a council, and then I can get that information out there, especially for people like Crescent Kurno, they like to book things a year in advance, and then sort of we've got the dates after that. And also, we even had an email the other day from a gentleman up north wanting to come down on holiday and wants to tie his Port Talon trip in with the pasty festival, which was lovely. And people like to put these things in calendars as well, sort of local calendars, and people coming from abroad as well. So, but if anyone's got any questions first from my report, and then I'm guessing we go into the recommendation?
Yes.
Yeah. So if anybody's got any questions, I will take them.
Councillor Reeve?
It's not a question. It's just a comment really. I just wanted to say how incredibly helpful it had been having Laura helping the markets committee to do the stall bookings for the markets, for the three Christmas markets. It has been absolutely invaluable. I can't tell you how much of a help it has been. We've had absolutely brilliant response from all the people that Laura has contacted. And it's meant that all the market stalls have been fully booked over all three of the, of the market weekends. And it, it just makes such a difference. And I would really like that to be noted, please.
Thank, thank you. I appreciate that. I really do. Thank you.
Well, it certainly, we, we had one of our best days on Saturday. And it just was amazing because I think, you know, people are still not completely certain. So the response we got shows that we got it right. And a big thank you from us, from me personally as Redruth Survival, as well as the councillor Laura.
Thank you.
Any comments? Any questions? And those dates, then we can put them, I take it they've all been, there've been no problems. So that can go in to the diary, can we Peter?
Can you, can somebody propose and second that, those dates? I think Deborah's proposing.
I'll second. Oh, Matthew second. I missed that, sorry. Right, Matthew second then. Or any abstentions or against any of those dates? I take it they're all all right? Yeah. Right, there we are Peter. That's next year taken care of.
Thank you.
Anything else off, off the report that you want to talk to Laura about? Councillor Reeve?
It's not about Laura. I just noticed that councillor Thomas dropped out of the call there. So we probably need to check that he's managed to get back on.
I don't have him on my screen. What should I do down at the bottom?
I think.
Yeah, he's here.
Did you, did you drop out and come back in Ian?
Yeah, my team's dropped out, dropped me out and asked me to register my office or some bloody thing. Excuse me.
I'm not sure whether councillor Thomas was there for the vote Judy, that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah. And we were talking about the dates. And were you in on that, that we actually wanted to set them down? Councillor Reeve proposed and councillor Brown seconded. Are you happy with that? Or have you any problem with any of those dates?
No, I didn't hear the discussion, but I've seen the papers and content with that, yes.
Yeah, it was just to set them so that we could get these put in the diaries and planning could begin. So that was all the vote was about that. But you're happy to go along with that then? So you're in favour? Right, okay Peter, that's unanimous.
You've got councillor Bisco with hand up. I'm not sure if it's Mr Bisco or Mrs Bisco.
Hello, is it you Alison? No, it's Henry. Hello Henry.
Alison was fiddling again.
So no hands from either of you then? Keep your hands to yourself, thank you. Right.
Hands to yourself.
Any, any comments? If not, thank you very much Laura, for the report, for the details and for what looks like being an interesting year.
Yes, thank you.
You can say that mildly, can't you? And right, 9.2 then, moving on to update the committee on the work of the Redruth Library and Information Service by the Senior Library and Information Assistant, Seaport Attached. Right Claire, over to you.
Hello everyone and good evening. Just to say that we're delighted, obviously lockdown mark two has finished. We're back to, we're back to limited browsing. We're back to having two of our computers back open. So it's been so lovely again to open the doors, as we waited for. As you'll have seen in my reports, our footfall and just people in the building, I mean, phase one was amazing. Phase two, including our second lockdown, has built on that. So since the 6th of July, we've had 5,044 people through the doors, since that's sort of 6th of July to the 30th of November, which is just quite phenomenal considering there are still people out there that aren't coming out, that aren't sort of back to engaging in what they were doing before. So the figures just speak for themselves. I'm really proud of them actually. It's fantastic. The other thing to say is obviously, we've been doing with Laura's team, lots of engagement activity, lots of trying to let our customers know that we're still here, trying to engage with families. That's all obviously in my report. But today, we've received some Christmas craft activity packs from Cornwall council, from the library service. Because they haven't spent as much money as they would have done on doing the activities for the summer reading challenge and all those other big key events in the year, they had money left over. So we've got lots of lovely activity packs. We've got all the little book start books that, that normally are done with the book start year for early years. We've got those as well. So we've put all the packs together today. And they range from packs from the little dinks from nought to fours, up to packs to sort of six, seven plus. So those are all ready to go as well. So we're trying to do literally as much as we can do with what we've got at the moment. But it's great. Our issues, as you looked on the report, issuing books are doing so well for our library. I spoke to the stock management team leader this week, and they're actually looking at switching back on the stock management system for us, which is a really huge achievement. Because up through between start of lockdown and now, we've literally not had to do any stock management at all. It's been very, just continued with what we're doing. So it means that actually our issues are getting to the point whereby he's quite happy for us to turn back on the system and actually start managing off stock. And he's even going to actually come and do an in-person visit, because he desperately wants to see the library, because he really helped us out with shelving and with what our stock would look like. I know we're not fully open yet, but it's a really good time to actually, the next quarter of next year, do all that planning and do all that, just the back work that you need to do to make the library look even more fantastic when it hopefully opens in April, fingers crossed. So yeah, that's really good. And the other thing also is I've presented to you the information from the information services review, as, as Judy referred to earlier. I've got another meeting coming up on the 17th of December. Basically, as we know, with the organisational review as it is at the moment, Peter's been able to shed some very headlines with us, which is for me and for our team. And our library will be used as a catalyst for community engagement. We've got this amazing resource. And actually, we want people coming into the building, engaging with us and doing all those other things, not necessarily just this triage service. So Peter and I have had the conversation, which is, you know, we need to do us, which is completely engaging with the community and our borrowers and whatever that looks like in the town and the outlying areas. So having had a chat with the, the client, our client relationship manager about that meeting, because I was a little bit, I was quite disappointed to be fair, as you can see with the information that was coming out from it, just from an engagement perspective. And she said, what's happening with Cornwall council is that each individual team, so the council tax team, the benefits advisors teams, they're actually taking very much all of the frontline information back in house. So that they are the ones that should be answering the questions and things. And that's fine, because we can signpost, that's not a problem. But what I don't want to happen in the future is that if our customers are then, we're giving them the information where we can refer them through to the service, as they should be, that then there's a block there, because they are then going to get their customers maybe to then go online when possibly they can't. So I'll see what happens out of the seven, the meeting on 17th. And certainly, obviously do a full report again for you, since I can, but it will be, what now, February, won't it, I think?
Yes.
And yeah, so, but we are absolutely determined that this is not going to stop our engagement at all. In fact, you know, it's just, we just need to do more and work with this, like we were saying earlier, work with the big ideas type scenarios, you know, and get involved in that and use our beautiful building as a resource and a catalyst to make all this stuff happen. So that's probably it for me, unless anyone's got any questions.
So you're not a triage fan Claire?
I know.
Thank God for that. I thought it had to be just me. I thought I'm going to be called an old stick in the mud again. Here we go. And I thought, I don't, even a hybrid would be better than just triage.
Well, it's very interesting. I was actually out on the information desk, I think it was last Friday. And it's so lovely just to see our customers coming through the door and actually to engage with them face to face and have that welcoming presence. And that's what our staff have re, you know, from the events team to our team, that's what our staff are really, really good at doing, is actually engaging with people. So.
Yes, exactly.
No, not a fan of triage.
Councillor Allenbrook and then councillor Thomas? Unmute.
Yeah, I have, sorry. I'm just trying to find my button. In the nicest possible way. Can I just say that I agree with you wholeheartedly Claire? We have a lot of people who are very uncomfortable, unhappy, using any sort of IT stuff and who actually need to engage with people face to face. What, why Cornwall council is obsessed with this, I do not know. But if I can do anything to support you, either sort of personally or as a Cornwall councillor, in not doing more of this no, no face to face stuff, please count me in. I find it completely disrespectful actually, to a large cohort of people who for whatever reason cannot, will not, do not want to use technology. And as well, the other very important thing I think to remember is that for some people, coming out and actually seeing somebody face to face is possibly the only human contact that they have. And for a council who's just signed up for something which says it's going to be more inclusive, I think that this is a very exclusive idea. So I'm with you on this one.
Can I just say before I bring in councillor Thomas, that it doesn't mean because you're techie that you don't want to see and talk to a person. I think the idea that you're either or is very, very wrong, because I don't see why you can't be both. Right councillor Thomas? Unmute please. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, it's, you might not be a fan of triage. Perhaps you're a fan of statistics, because I've got a question Claire.
Yep.
In amongst all of your databases or information gathering, is there any way that you can identify users from within the parish and from without the parish? And if so, can you identify the parish from which they come?
Do you mean councillor Thomas, as far as people accessing the building, or as far as people borrowing from the library, or people coming in to use the other services?
All.
I thought you might do. It's certainly something, I mean, from the, I can see if we might be able to download some reports, certainly from the library database. We should be able to do that. Like, I could get Paul on that. From some of the other information, I mean, Charlotte might have some more of that information.
What I'm really interested in Claire is how many actually, how many people actually come through the library door?
And from where they're coming?
I mean, in particular, Llanfair would be quite interesting to know how many people visit the, the library from Llanfair. But of course, being, I'd like to know how many come from St Dave or Campboney.
From a, from a footfall basis, and people actually coming through the door, probably no, you can't get that information. You can get the overall numbers. What we can do is maybe run a report from, from the library management system, which is around, yes, how many people have actually still been borrowing books over the last six months? And actually, we could do that and see where they come from. So.
That would help.
I could try and get that done as an exercise.
That would be useful, thank you.
Okay.
You can, you can certainly do that, because I remember as part of the discussions about taking over the library in the town, Cornwall council actually produced a map showing where all the library users, as Claire says, you can't do it through just people physically coming through the door. But if they're using a library guard, it should show up where they live and everything else. So it's something that Claire can, can certainly take up with Cornwall council.
Councillor Reeve?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to know Claire, how popular the new telephone line had been? And what, what it had been, kind of what advice and support it had been giving to members of the public?
We haven't had one call through.
Oh, okay. That's really disappointing. So is it a new, is it a new number or are they just using the town council number?
It's a new number, but it is one of the, it's one of the town council new numbers that are on the, on the information desk. But obviously, we've got, it's, it's quite, Peter and I have had a long chat about this, because it's a number that people can phone through and get sort of some advice or information. But also, when we're covering for the town council main phone number, if the phone gets put through, we'll get all of the calls as well on that phone number. So we have to be very careful about how we answer the phone and what we're calling it and all those other things. So, but to be fair, we've, I think we've only had, we've had one person come through that was, they were more asking about their council tax, but actually we had to refer them back to Cornwall council. But the other really interesting thing was, we had a lovely lady that phoned up, offering to volunteer her services to actually be on the phone. And she has, was, she used to work for the Samaritans.
Oh wow.
Yeah. So we put her through to volunteer Cornwall to help out. So we, we've done, you know, there's been, it's been some good news stories, but not necessarily what possibly we hoped it might be. But obviously, the information is still there. It's still very new. So we'll just sort of see where we go.
Thank you. Thank you Claire. Any councillor have got any questions or comments for Claire? Well, I would just like to say again, echoing everybody's, you've done a marvellous job. Thank you very much. Let's hope next year is better. I hesitate to say it could get a lot worse. And I'm delighted that we're going forward with all sorts of new ideas when we're let loose. Thank you. Right, moving on. Item 10, collaboration between Redruth Town Council and other organisations within the town, draft terms of reference for approval. See the. Draft terms of reference for approval. See the report attached. So comments or questions, please? Do I take it that you're all happy and we can take the report as read and everybody agrees with it? Anybody against or any problems? Do we need a vote on this, Pete?
Yes, please.
Right, well, I propose we, can I propose we accept it because I've declared an interest?
Yeah.
All right. I propose it then, and it's seconded by Counselor Bisco, Henry Bisco. Anybody against or abstaining? That's unanimous then, Pete.
Thank you.
Item eleven, two brief on town council ambassadors stroke Covid advisor patrols. See report attached. I thought this was quite interesting, actually. Um, and good news overall.
I've put that together because it was something that was brought in. Uh, we only really heard about it last minute, but it was brought in uh as uh, I won't call it a lockdown, because it wasn't really a lockdown, but as the restrictions at the end, at the middle of last week uh came off, Cornwall Council uh came up with these town centre ambassadors, Covid advisor patrols. So I've tried to put something together fairly brief and succinct as to what you may or you, what you may see in the town, what they're doing. And interestingly enough, I have already received a report from what the Covid advisor patrols were picking up uh as of Saturday. And it might be, it might be of interest to you that reports from locals that the Red Lion pub in Redruth was not using table service and allowing people to come up mask wearing, which they witnessed. That that prevented some locals from wanting to enter the pub and people were also crowded in the doorway, smoking with no social distancing. Several people were shouting, arguing behind Redruth Town Centre. I'm not sure what they mean by that, but showing lots of antisocial behaviour, which they have found extremely common in Redruth. And the youths have little or no respect for the people or the town. Uh, and again, the Oxford Inn was no social distancing and people were witnessed at the bar being served. So those are the sort of things they're picking up. Hopefully, they, if they haven't the enforcement council, like health, our public protection officers involved to start taking action.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Pete, uh, before I have uh Counselor Thomas, followed by Counselor Reeve, Ellenbrook and Bisco. Just to say that I saw two very handsome young men who walked through the Butter Market on Saturday, uh looking very friendly and helpful. So they are out there and they certainly look quite impressive.
They were probably two, the two Kestrel Guards that we have paid for from Covid funding to back you up on your market days.
Yes.
They're after to what is on this report.
They are the night time patrols as well, are they not, the others?
I don't know whether they're the same people, but probably the two that you saw were guards that were paid for by the Covid funding that we have had, not from Cornwall Council. They're separate to what I've included on that report.
Right. Counselor Thomas, followed by Counselor Reeve, and then I'll pick up the other two.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I saw, I saw two gentlemen walking up Market Way, looking in the units as they went. Um, all I could say is they had yellow sercoats on, so I presume they were some sort of marshal. Um, two questions for Peter, actually. Um, you mentioned that they're being monitored by CCTV and the funding is coming from Cornwall Council. Is that through Tolvadden? Number one question.
Yes, they, they've got backup from the CCTV monitoring, which, and this this whole package of Covid funding that Cornwall Council have received is paying for the CCTV monitoring. What I'm put getting at is we are not going to be expected to pick up the tab.
Right.
Oh, congratulations to Cornwall Council then. Uh, and the second question is that um you mentioned daytime coverage between eleven and four, and then evening and night time patrols will con- commence at four P M. But it doesn't actually say what time they finish.
Probably because I didn't have the information to hand. I think they go through till sometime af- just after midnight.
Great.
Counselor Reeve.
Yeah, I can confirm that they're scheduled to finish at, at midnight. So that's the time when they're, they're due to, to finish. Um, so I also um saw them on Saturday, the two Kestrel Guards. It's quite hard to know if they're the two Kestrel Guards that we have fi- we have funded, or if they're the two Kestrel Guards that are part of the Cornwall Council funding. And of course, they don't know when you ask them who's paying them. They just know that they've been told to be there. Um, I, I'm hopeful that it was my feedback about having some reporting that has prompted the report that has been sent in, because I did say that, you know, I asked them if there'd been any issues and they said they were telling me various things. And I said, well, it'd be really helpful.
Yeah.
The town council actually had that information, because I feel that the information is probably being fed back to Cornwall Council and we may not be getting it. And lo and behold, this morning, um, a report was forthcoming. Um, I think it was slightly unfortunate that it was forthcoming after we'd had the Safer Towns meeting. Um, so I wasn't able to, to bring it up this morning um in that particular meeting. Um, I have got a couple of other things and I'm conscious that other people have got things they want to talk about. But two of the things that they verbally mentioned to me was the fact that the car park um in Newcut specifically did not appear to have any signage on it that, that told the public that they didn't have to pay. So I'm slightly concerned that we are funding a free car park on a Saturday because we're paying Cornwall Council for that privilege, but Cornwall Council are not informing the wider public that they don't have to pay. So Cornwall Council are getting paid both ways. Um, so I would be um hoping that they would at the very least put up some kind of sign on the, on the machine that tells the public that they don't have to pay. Um, even better, some kind of hood that goes over the machine that actually is, makes it look as if it's out of order.
The sign, the signage has been done and done by us and approved by Cornwall Council, so it should be up.
Okay, well, I'm just telling you, I'm, I, I didn't actually go into the car park. I'm only just giving you the feedback that I had from the Kestrel Guards. Um, and the other issue is the toilet, and I don't quite know where you want to go with that, Pete. Um, I I presume that um you'd rather not go anywhere with it. Um, but the question of the public toilets not being open has now been raised again. And subsequently, it's been brought to the Chamber of Commerce and they have sent an item of correspondence in. It was too late to go on the paperwork for this meeting, but they have requested that we yet again talk about the public toilets in Newcut and the fact that they are at this moment still not open to the public. Um, and I think we need to give that some further consideration.
I'll correct, correct you, Deborah, the disabled toilets are open to the public. As of, once I've got that email on Friday, I've asked Alec to look, uh, get in contact with Sparkles to find out, A, whether they can do extra cleaning, B, what the costs are, check on the Legionella. Once I've got all that information, then I can bring it to council to, for them to, for you to make a decision.
Yeah, that's fine. I think that's all that they want. They want us to talk about it again, because um clearly just having a disabled toilet open isn't sufficient. Um, and now that the town is back open again and there's a significantly larger amount of people in the town leading up to Christmas, I don't think it's something that we can wait until New Year to do.
But it's, but it's in, it's interesting that businesses raise it. I know members of the public have been in touch with any, any of our staff that I know of saying that the toilets aren't open.
Well, I think what happens is the members of the public, quite rightly, raise it with the businesses that they're in, because they're in Wilkinson's and they want to go to the loo and actually, you know, that it's not open. So they're gonna raise it with the businesses and the businesses then raise it with, with the chamber. But they've obviously also raised it with the Kestrel Guards. So I think um toilets across the county now appear to be open. Um, and I think we will, we are probably one of the few places where that is not the case.
Well, I was in, I was in Port Talon this afternoon and their loo's are open because my daughter used it, so I can confirm that. Um, and also with two more markets coming up, it does kind of put the pressure on, I think. I want to move on to Counselor Bisco, followed by Counselor Ellenbrook, if that's it. Counselor Reeve. Uh, can you take your hand down if it's an old hand, Ian, please? Right, Counselor Bisco.
Um, with reference to the Red Lion, um, and the uh comment about the uh not doing table service, um. I wonder whether the configuration of the pub um does sort of prevent table service, uh, a little bit of table service. And I can um back that up with uh table service in my own local establishment, um, where the uh barmaid doesn't bring you a drink, but you go to the bar and they have where you, 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 you wear your face covering. And there are screens in front of the uh, in, in the bar. And you go get your drink, come back, sit down at the table and then take your face covering off.
Hmm.
Um, when the environmental health officer, officer visited my uh local establishment, and I'm sure you agree, Mr. Uh, Counselor Garrick, um, that uh he was perfectly happy with, with said arrangement. And he gave the, he be, he, he didn't get more than fifteen feet inside the uh, the pub. And he said, I think you've done everything you possibly can. So I suspect also that the Red Lion, and I know Lindsay and her husband are, are um, uh, particularly, um they're very, very, very good landlord and landlady. And they, they would not do anything to damage their business. And in their interest, not to do it.
Absolutely.
And it is. And when you consider that uh the uh, uh, hospitality trade, the pub trade has had, has, has had four months of lost business in this year, as have I, um, that you adhere particularly closely to all of the uh, uh guidelines that have been issued by the government. And I would take a complaint with a pinch of salt. And I would go, if you really want to go and uh, um uh investigate, I would go and talk to the landlord and landlady themselves. Because it's their livelihood, it's their, they ain't gonna flaunt it.
I can't see that.
Don't take any notice of it.
Thank you, Counselor Bisco. Counselor Ellenbrook.
Um, thank you. First of all, um, on the um car park, I used um Newcut Car Park on Saturday, and I can assure you that there was nothing on any of those car park machines in Newcut that said it was free. And in actual fact, I saw somebody um attempting to put money in.
Hmm.
So I think that at the very least, if they aren't going to do it, I would suggest that we as a town council just go around and put something on all the machines on a Saturday, just to say that they are free. And I'm not sure which Saturdays we're paying for, but I don't see any reason why we couldn't put something on the lines of um paid for by your local town council.
Yeah.
I've already got it on the, on the chip to make sure uh somebody goes around tomorrow and checks and make sure that the uh the signs are up, although I know Laura's got her hand up and she may be able to add to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the posters do clearly state the dates in which we're paying. I made sure I got that in there, Counselor Ellenbrook.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I actually putting signs on the actual machines on the Saturdays saying they're free courtesy of the town council is where I'm going with that. Because I think that's what people need to see. If people are coming into the town from, from outside and they haven't um seen the, the fact that the car parks are free, then I think it's, it's only right that we as a um, a town council should be more proactive. It's something that we're using our funding for, and I think public need to know that that's uh what the town are doing to support them. Um, the other thing is, going back to the reports, you're saying that, that you have, Peter. Um, I'm a bit concerned about these guards saying that they've witnessed antisocial behaviour. Um, and I would ask that any um instances of antisocial behaviour are actually reported through to Ollie Baylis. Um, because he will actually then keep that as a, a, as a record, because I think it's important. Camborne have from the conversations we had at Safer Court, uh Safer Towns this morning, it seems that Camborne are experiencing some ASB um as well. And I think, again, we need to jump on this fairly quickly, please.
I don't, I'm only, I'm only reporting what was said to me this morning, but I'll go back to uh Simon at Kestrel and ask him to uh make sure that it is forwarded on to the relevant people.
Yeah, I just think it's important that if we are having instances like that, that they're, that they're reported as soon.
Because these people have been employed by Cornwall Council, but I double check.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ellenbrook. Counselor Reeve and Counselor Bisco, is that an old hand?
Mine's a new hand.
Yeah, you're, you're, but Counselor Bisco, if it's an old hat, thank you. Right, Counselor Reeve, carry on.
Okay, so I was just going to ask the clerk to, to um request more information from Kestrel Guards about the, the nature of their report, so we can make a more informed um decision about the things that they're talking about. Um, so it would be helpful, as Barbara's just said, to get some more information about the antisocial behaviour and about the, the other incidents that, that they've witnessed. Um, and I would suggest that Cornwall Council will know full well how much money those car parks took on those Saturdays that we've paid for. So perhaps the clerk would like to ask Cornwall Council to deduct it from the amount of money that we're paying them. Thank you.
That we've paid.
So if we've already paid them, that's even worse. I mean, seriously, if we've already paid for the car park to be free and they have not made it clear to the public that it is free and they have taken revenue, then we need to be informing them of that and they need to tell us how much it was and we need to be refunded.
Right, any more comments on that or can we move on to item twelve? Any comments or anything else that needs to be said? Right, moving on to item twelve then, to consider requests for financial assistance. Um. Have you had a look at this? Any ideas or comments? What about you, Pete? Anything you'd like to contribute on this one?
Other than the recommenda- the, the bit of the recommendation that I've put in there is that bear in mind that if we were uh under the old section one three seven rules, we would not be able to make a contribution because they are a limited company. But as a council who's adopted general power competence, we can consider it. Um, they are asking for an awful lot of money. Um, so I'll leave it to members to decide what they uh think that we should be doing.
Counselor Reeve.
Uh, I would like to apply the usual rule. Uh, do we know uh who it's going to benefit within the Redruth Parish? I don't think there's any um indication. Um, and well, I, I mean, I know one of the people that is uh um on the paperwork, so um, I'm not gonna say anymore, because I think maybe it's a bit more Camborne centric than uh but, but, but you know, I just, I just think it's a lot of money and we need to know that it's targeting people in the parish before we agree.
Thank you. Counselor Garrick, followed by Counselor Thomas.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I would actually say that the way that money's allocated, it's done on super output areas of uh deprivation. Um, so it would be very, very difficult for them to actually identify people in the parish until people actually come forward. And also organisations like this actually go out looking for people rather than people going to them. So it's quite difficult to put a handle on, you know, it's gonna be ten, twenty people from this area. Um. If we give them anything, I'll give them a token amount, personally speaking. I'm not they're, 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 they've, they've, they've got eighty percent of their funding through C L L D. Um. And they've obviously, they're applying to other parishes as well, Camborne and Eluggan for funding, so.
Right.
I, I don't think it'd be possible to actually identify exactly how many people in the parish they will actually benefit at this point in time.
Right, thank you. Counselor Thomas.
I'd, I'd simply like to propose, Chair, that um we don't support the application on the basis that the council hasn't, has not got a policy of su- supporting limited companies, full stop.
I'm quite happy to second that. So is that an official proposal?
Yes, sorry.
Right, um, right, I'll second it. Anybody for it, abstain? Oops, sorry, oops, I've lost you now.
Before you go anywhere.
Hang on, I'm not going, I'm trying to get back in.
You're not gone anywhere, you're still there.
Oh, yes, you are. I've lost you. I can't see a thing. There we go. Right, back again. Right, sorry.
Make sure there are no amendments first.
Okay, right. So first then, are there any amendments to the proposal? Right, anybody abstaining or against? So the proposal is, sorry, Pete.
It might be easier if I go, go round to everybody, go round everybody at the first instance on this one. So the proposal- instance on this one. So the proposal is that we don't give, we do not give any, uh, money to companies that are, and that, i.e. we are not supporting limited companies. That is the proposal.
Yes.
Support, proposed by councillor Thomas and seconded by councillor Mrs Davidson. So running down the list, Mrs Bisco, you for or against?
Oh, sorry.
Wake up.
Oh, yeah.
Are you for or against?
For not giving any money. Yes.
Yeah.
Well done, Alison. Councillor Bisco.
Uh, four.
Councillor Bishop, Brown.
Four.
Davidson, you seconded, so I'm assuming you're for, Mrs Ellenbrook?
I'm abstaining.
Thank you, councillor Garrick.
Um, I'm going to abstain as well, actually. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Reeve.
For.
And councillor Thomas, I assume you're for as you proposed it. So I've got two for, six votes for, two abstentions and none against. So the motion's carried.
Could I ask everybody to take down their old hands, please? I've got councillor Thomas and councillor Garrick showing.
Oh, are you? I'm sorry about that.
Right.
Change yourself, Chair.
I do, indeed.
Oh, yes. I knew that all the time, of course. Um, right.
So I, I, I do find it very, I would like, I would like to actually make a proposal that we don't call them old hands. I think that's very, bit ageist really, and not very, very politically correct. Could we not find another term?
The term we use in Cornwall is legacy hands.
I reminded you all that now.
Legacy. Oh, I love it.
Because it's recording is going out on the website tomorrow and have your discussion afterwards.
Right. Thank you. Legacy hands. That's quite good. Right. If there's nothing further then, I would like to close the meeting and say good night to you all and thank you for attending. Good night.
Good night, Chair.